I'd like to call this meeting of the Northwest Local School District Board of Education to order. Larry, if you would call a roll.
Mr. Detschel.
Here.
Mrs. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Mr. Heether.
And Mr. Unger.
Here.
If everyone would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is approval of minutes. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, you have the minutes from the October 20th meeting. The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
So moved.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call for a vote. We have an abstention on that? Did I just?
Chris's app.
Okay.
I'm abstaining.
Motion carries. Our next item is legislative update. Mr. Harlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to the newly elected member of the State Board of Education, a longtime educator here in the district, former Colrain High School art teacher, Pat Brunns. The Ohio House of Representatives is considering legislation to limit the hours a student spends in standardized testing to four hours per subject per year. Legislation is going to need a lot of work because there's a lot of questions about what's really meant by that. The House Rules Committee passed Common Core repeal House Bill 597 earlier this month. It is expected to be voted on by the full House during lame duck. It is unclear if it can pass through the Senate in the remaining time as well. I expect it will be reconsidered when the 131st General Assembly convenes in January, particularly if there is support for it in the House. Speaking of which, Governor Kasich was also reelected and Republicans extended their majority in the Ohio House. Our local incumbents, Representative Lou Terhar of Greentownship and Bill Blessing of Colrain Township were reelected. The Springfield Township and Forest Park portions of our school district have a new legislator in Republican Jonathan Dever. Congratulations to Representatives Terhar and Blessing and Representative-elect Dever. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Our next item is Student Achievement Liaison Report. Dr. Jackson?
I'm going to have Mrs. Bless introduce our speakers.
Tonight we have Carrie Barnett, art teacher from Colrain High School, and she's here tonight to share several community art projects that her students have participated in over the past year. She's actually flying solo tonight. She had some students that were going to be with her, but parents did not want them to out in this weather driving, so I told her we understood.
They would have been much more entertaining than myself. I'm sorry about that. So again, my name's Carrie Barnett, and I'm one of the high school art teachers at Colrain High School. And I've been asked to talk to you about the art projects that allow my students to go beyond the classroom. I've worked very hard to establish such programs for my students at Colrain, but before I go too far into the projects, I'd like to explain why arts is such a vital part of the whole child's education and relate that importance as to why I look for these opportunities for my students to reach beyond the classroom. The National Endowment for the Arts has stated and recognizes that students who participate in the arts are more engaged in life and are empowered to be fulfilled, responsible citizens who can make profound positive impacts on this world. In addition, research has shown that students from low socioeconomic backgrounds who have arts-rich experiences are more likely to achieve key positive outcomes academically, socially, and civically compared to their peers who lack that access to the arts experiences. So I believe it is vital that our students in the Northwest Local School District have arts experiences within their lives. The Essential Understandings for the High School Visual Art Program emphasize the importance of cultivating our students to be an integral component of society. One of our key learning goals is to develop students who can demonstrate an appreciation of art through either oral or written discussions about artwork. One of the ways I get my students to reach this learning goal is to create opportunities for them to interact with different observers of art. Through this interaction, it's my intention for the artist or the student to help change a part of their worldview based on the artwork they become involved with, and also to teach them that they can affect others through their art. Involving students in art projects which force them out of their comfort zone and out of the classroom is essential to this global appreciation of the arts. I have found two different projects for my students to embrace in my quest to broaden their appreciation of art: the Memory Project and the Rain Barrel Art Project. The Memory Project allows students to create portraits of orphans from around the world. My students receive photographs of orphans, and they create portraits to send to these children. The concept is based around creating a sense of heritage. Many of these orphans have lost their homes due to war or death or death of their parents, and they have nothing to remember their childhood. The portraits sent to them by student artists give them a sense of love and allow them to have something tangible to keep forever. The Rain Barrel Art Project was developed by the Regional Storm Water Collaborative and the Cincinnati Zoo to bring awareness of water conservation and its impact on our local society. So my students created group proposals for rain barrels that were then accepted into this project. The students worked collaboratively to create rain barrels that were then auctioned off at the zoo to raise money for water conservation awareness. Both of these projects left lasting impressions on my students. In addition to creating appreciation for art, the Rain Barrel Art Project proposal process prepares students for real-world experiences. Students have to work collaboratively to prepare a written statement and a drawn image for acceptance into the program. Only 50 rain barrels are accepted each year. The Colrain High School Advanced Design students have successfully created four to five different proposals each year which have been accepted into this program. Judges for this process repeatedly praised my students' proposals, saying they're extremely professional and creative. And I was hoping that one of my students would be here to share her experiences. They start off with this project preparing the barrels. So we have these huge rain barrels, and they are divided into groups, and they work together to prepare the rain barrels. So it starts with sanding and priming. They draw their images out on a small scale and then use the old-fashioned projectors that we get from the media center to project these images from transparencies onto the larger sizes of the rain barrels. So transferring a design from a two-dimensional design to a three-dimensional design in itself allows for a lot of problem solving. They go from that to painting them. This is several weeks' process for the students to work together. They have to think about how they're going to create the artwork and how it's going to work from background to foreground within the composition, large to small details, so that they can get the entire process. So these are some of the pictures of my students last year, the group last year that did this rain barrel project. Several of the students, in addition to just painting and being a part of this, were able to attend the auction at the Cincinnati Zoo. And not only did they just attend as artists, they also participated in being guides to the people that were there looking to purchase these. And several of the students said that one of the coolest things about being there was watching people's reaction. And so I think that that in itself really gives them a sense of purpose for what they are doing in this type of a setting. So the Rain Barrel Art Project's a great opportunity for students to use their art to help promote awareness for a need within our local community. The Memory Project is a project that allows students to share their talents in a global way and to help people they've never met before. Since this project is one I do with senior art students, I asked several former students to send me their memories of this project and what it meant to them as student artists, so I have some quotes to share. Bonnie Walter, currently a student studying at Miami University, wrote to me saying, "The Memory Project was probably one of the most meaningful projects I've done as a young artist. Knowing that my art was going to an orphan with very little possessions of their own made me feel like I was creating a priceless gift that would truly be appreciated for years to come. I felt connected to the child on some level and found myself wondering if they felt the same connection whenever they looked at the portrait, although we had never met and were thousands of miles away." She also stated that she probably worked harder on that project than a lot of my other works. It was more important to me because I knew it wasn't just going to sit in my portfolio unappreciated like some of my other projects. Mary Ellen Brandy wrote to me saying, "Creating artwork for orphans I've never met before was quite invigorating and also something I would have never thought to do until Mrs. Barnett gave us the project. It motivated me to do my absolute best because I was creating artwork for someone other than myself. It was a great feeling to know this child was going to look at this portrait of themself and see how I saw them and hopefully feel loved and appreciated." She went on to say, "I personally felt appreciated because my art mattered to them. It was a great experience to be intrinsically motivated to do a portrait of an orphan." Will Plackey, another former student, wrote to me saying, "As an artist, the difference between passing and failing a project isn't always ability, so much as drive. Many times there isn't enough creative juice or passion and inspiration to craft anything above mediocre." He continued to say that "The Memory Project provides a great inspiration to artists to use their skills for a real-world cause. Not being able to see the children's reactions to the gift means that the artwork must speak entirely for themselves. My fellow classmates and I worked harder and smarter with more emotional investment because of this, and as a result, we yielded exceptional artwork in the process." And you can see that in these portraits. Mary Ellen concluded that this project definitely showed people that art class isn't just about creating art, it's about making people happy through their artwork. So I hope you enjoyed this little presentation and learned a little bit about the importance of a global arts awareness program for our students. These projects not only need teachers and students who are willing to participate and devote their time and creativity talents, but they also require fees for us to do that. So I have appreciated the support that Northwest Local School District has given us and hope that we continue to get that support.
Thank you for coming. I've seen some of the artwork displayed up in the piano store at Northgate Mall. Seems like several of the students have some of their artwork. I'm not sure if it's for sale or not, but it is prominently displayed up at Kathy's pianos and organs up at Northgate. Several items up there. Thank you very much for coming for such a nice presentation.
Thank you for having me. This year I have 12 students in the Advanced Design class. It's an upper-level class. They're all seniors that take the course. I did have a couple of juniors last year. They're the ones that were going to come tonight that were in the class. I had 15 in the class last year.
I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Barnett for winning the Secondary Division Award for the Ohio Art Education Association. And we had it as a Northwest notable, I think, last month possibly, but she does a great job for us. We have a great art program because of her dedication, and it's been recognized by her association as well, so thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Our next item is our Butler Tech update. Mr. Detschel?
Dan, no report tonight. Our board meeting is tomorrow night, so at our next meeting I'll have an update.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Our next item is our Principals Report. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Schisler. He is here from Colrain Middle School.
Members of the board, good evening. It's chilly tonight, and it's great to be here to talk a little bit about what we're doing at Colrain Middle this year. If you remember, last year I came here and talked a little bit about what we're doing with our teacher-based teams. And so this year, I thought I would spend a couple of minutes just talking to you about how we've taken our teacher-based teams or our TBTs to the next level. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about what we're doing with assessment literacy. And of course, we've committed ourselves to providing the highest level of instruction for all of our kids. And as we've talked through last year, we're meeting regularly as teacher-based teams to look at data and to look at both intervention and enrichment that meet the needs of all of our kids. One thing that we've begun to focus on this year is called assessment literacy. And I just, like I said, wanted to spend just a couple of minutes talking to you about assessment literacy. I have an example of a document that I'm going to very, very quickly walk you through, but I did want to talk just a little bit tonight about assessment literacy. And assessment literacy is simply enabling educators to efficiently review, select, and develop valid, reliable measures for student achievement, creating assessments that are appropriate for kids. In other words, are the assessments, are the tests, are the quizzes, are the assessments we administer to our kids, are they appropriate? So to help us determine if assessments are appropriate for student learning, we've had our teachers start creating a document called an Assessment Blueprint, which is exactly what you have here in front of you. So I thought I'd take just a minute to walk you through this Assessment Blueprint from a sixth-grade science class. Now, I will tell you that this was very early on in the school year. This is one of our first Assessment Blueprints that we had our teachers design. There are areas for improvement on our Assessment Blueprint. We've had some consulting work, and our consultant actually walked us through examples of our Assessment Blueprints, including this one, and offered us some suggestions on things that we can do to improve. So as the year goes on, we continue to receive more training at the building level to help our teachers work through these assessments. So the document that's here on the projector now is the one that you have in front of you. Some of the key components that the teachers look at are the learning expectations, the learning goal, the targets. What are we asking the kids to learn? And you can see here we have four different items that have been identified by these teachers. It's a team of two sixth-grade science teachers. They've identified some learning targets that they want the kids to be able to identify on this assessment. They've also identified the method of the questioning that's going to occur, the SR and CR, the Selected Response and the Constructed Response. So different types of questions are being asked of these kids. And they also look at the level of complexity. There are four levels of complexity that you see listed, 1, 2, 3, and 4. And as you can see, Level 1 is a very, very simple recall and reproduce, all the way up to Level 3, Strategic Thinking, and Level 4, Extended Thinking. And you'll notice at the bottom, if you look at the number of items that have been selected for each of the levels of cognitive complexity and for the value of the points that have been assigned, you come up with a rubric or a score, which is at the very bottom here, and it tells you how many points for this assessment for each level of cognitive complexity. So you see there's 16 points for the Level 1, 16 points for the Level 2, and 16 points for the Level 3, so a very, very nicely balanced assessment. So teachers then give the assessment using this rubric that helps them design questions at those three levels. They can analyze and respond to the student data by designing an assessment that meets the appropriate level of complexity for students. So as you saw from this blueprint, there were questions at Levels 1, 2, and 3. Teachers can still provide the activities at Level 4 for students that are capable of performing at that extended thinking level. So just because there's not any Level 4 questions on there doesn't indicate that the assessment isn't reliable. It just means that for this particular set of learning targets, the teachers have decided to offer an extended activity outside of this assessment for students that are ready for that extended thinking level. So what I showed here just a minute ago down here at the bottom are the calculations for the different levels of cognitive complexity. And you'll notice, as I mentioned, there's a nice balance of 1, 2, and 3, which we would call stretch. So this assessment has good stretch. It's meeting the needs of kids that are performing at a Level 1 all the way up through kids that are performing at a Level 3. So there's a nice balance, a nice range of students that are being assessed with this particular assessment. In the past, when we designed assessments, we didn't look necessarily at the level of complexity when we designed assessments. We just created questions based on what we taught the kids. Now, with our Assessment Blueprint, teachers before the assessment can use some student data, and they can create the assessment based on the complexity of levels that the kids need for achievement on the learning goal. So we're designing the assessment for the kids. We're not teaching to the assessment. So each assessment is different. As you can tell from this particular assessment, this science teacher, and like I said, actually it's two science teachers, they are able to determine the cognitive needs of the students. And then after they've determined through the blueprint where their kids are at, then they're able to begin designing questions that they can ask the kids on this particular This blueprint gives the students an appropriate assessment of their learning and, again, keeps the focus on the achievement goals for students and not the questions on the assessment. So again, it goes back to, we're not teaching for the questions, we're creating questions based on what we've taught. So then what the teachers do, they give the assessment, they've created their blueprint, they've determined what the kids are capable of learning, they give the assessment, they get all the data back. Then we go back to that TBT process that we talked about last year and we're continuing this year, where they're able to look at the data that they got from the assessments and from the blueprint and then from the assessment itself. Then they can look at how the students perform, then they can decide how the kids did and determine what the next steps for instruction are. And then they can decide what levels of complexity they need to focus on more or less, and then they can group the kids for intervention and enrichment. So again, the whole process is based upon what the learning goal is and what the level of cognitive complexity the kids are ready for. So I thought what would be appropriate is to tell you a little bit about what training the teachers have had, because this takes some training for them to be able to understand how this process works and to use it effectively. Like I said, we are still very much in the beginning stages. Our staff received some training back in August, and during the October faculty meeting, we had a consultant from the Montgomery County ESC. Our principals, in our summer retreat, actually received a presentation on assessment literacy from Liz Wolfe Everly from the Montgomery County ESC. Colrain Middle School was so impressed with what she had to offer, we were able to get her for our August in-service. So she came to our August in-service, and she presented an introduction to assessment literacy. What does assessment literacy mean? How do you create better assessments? And then what does a blueprint look like? So she came out in August and worked with us a little bit and gave us an overview and introduction to assessment literacy. Then, we were able to get her back in October. She was just there a couple of weeks ago. The staff members in our building actually got to review and critique building assessments from other teachers. They looked at the blueprints and they looked at the assessments. Then they were able to help analyze those for the teachers and give the teachers feedback. Liz was able to come in with a couple of the assessments that we had given her prior, including this one, and she gave us some feedback on this particular blueprint. And then the teachers, they sat in groups, and they looked at blueprints from other colleagues, and they were able to give them feedback on the levels of complexity, the levels of rigor, and are we really testing what the goals and standards are supposed to be about? So obviously, we're very much in the beginning of this process, but we're very, very encouraged. And again, there's still some work to do, but we're very, very excited to continue working through the Assessment Blueprint process for this year. Thank you. Do you have any questions? I tried to not get too deep into the weeds here, but I wanted to give you a little bit of a flavor.
How is it determined? For instance, we go back to this chart here. You have depth of knowledge, Level 2, basic application skills, concepts. So two of the four are assessed there, and then two that aren't are 3. Why, for depth of knowledge, 3, strategic thinking? Why were these two chosen for 2 and these two chosen for 3? And how did that, and how were the point system determined? Why is this one worth 10 points, the other one's worth 4 points, and so on and so forth?
Correct. The teachers look at the, as the students have gone through the learning goal and through the targets, they have made some determinations as to the knowledge and the critical content that the students need to be successful with this particular learning goal and these targets. And they determine through that process how many questions they are allowed to ask at each level and what the point values are. Like I said earlier, there are no DOK 4, there are no extended thinking questions with this particular assessment because it wasn't appropriate for this particular assessment. With science, they used other ways to extend the thinking. But it depends on the data that they have from the kids. And again, they've been gathering data as they began the learning goal and as they've taught the entire learning goal and all the targets. And at the end, when they're ready to create the assessment, when they look at the blueprint and they start sitting down to work with the blueprint, that's when they decide how many questions do they think are appropriate at each level, what are the values of those points? And again, it all comes down to the bottom numbers, which you're looking at at the bottom, the stretch, if you will.
Sure.
And the various, hitting the various levels of cognitive complexity.
And then as we measure whether or not the students are hitting the learning goals, are the learning goals aligned with the state tests?
The learning goals are aligned with the curriculum.
Okay.
Yes. They're not, we have, we work with our curriculum. Our learning goals and our scales are based on our Essential Understanding documents, which are based on our curriculum. So we're teaching our curriculum.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is report from employee organizations. Is there anyone here from the Certified Licensed Employee Group that would like to speak?
I just want to say thank you for mentioning Pat Brunns in your legislative report.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. It's important for people to remember that not only do we elect a state House and a state senate, we also elect state Board of Education members. It's great to have someone from our community on that board.
Thank you. A report from classified employee organization. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seen no one. Report from school-related organizations. Is there anyone from a school-related organization that would like to speak? See no one. Let's move on to community communications. Larry, did we receive any yellow cards this evening? I don't have any. Is anyone? So we have no one that would like to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to. Yes, of course. I didn't know about the other card. But would be, I think.
Could you, we have a time at the end of the meeting for questions from the audience, so I will call on you at that time to speak.
That's great.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the fiscal item. Dr. Jackson? We have several reports from the treasurer. Larry, do you have anything to describe on these?
Not related. The things that your board should do every month, so nothing extraordinary.
Okay, the Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would like to comment to the gentleman in the back and to everyone in the audience. This is all posted on Friday before the meeting, so the board's already had an opportunity to review these, and we certainly invite community members to go on our website and look at our posted board meetings before the meetings, which is one of the great benefits of electronic school board. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call for a vote. And the motion carries 4 to 0. Next item is Certified Licensed Personnel item. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have one administrative resignation, three certificated resignations, two tutor procedural resignations, three home instructor procedural resignations, one extra-duty resignation, six extra-duty procedural resignations, and one event worker procedural resignation. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries 4 to 0. Our next item is classified retirements and resignations. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have five classified resignations, and we have several classified substitute procedural resignations. The Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries 4 to 0. Our next item is authorization to file a modified tax budget for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. Dr. Jackson?
Yes. Mr. McDonough, do you want to describe these, the modified tax budget for the 15-16 fiscal year?
Sure. Basically, the County Budget Commission is allowing the school district to file the modified tax budget, which incorporates the five-year forecast, which is pretty much a document that the board and the community has used to sync, so now it becomes part of the tax budget. And that is the main change for the modified tax budget, but the board does have to pass the resolution to do that. So the recommendation would be to pass the resolution to file modified tax budget for fiscal 2016.
Was that right? Thank you.
The Treasurer recommends the Board of Education approve the fiscal item as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Larry? The motion carries 4 to 0. Our next item is another fiscal item. Dr. Jackson?
I'll turn this over again to Mr. McDonough.
Two times a year, the board is, has the ability to request from the county auditor advance on taxes paid. And as you know, taxes are generally due January 20th and June 20th, basically. So anytime after the 1st of the year, the board is in a position to request advances of those taxes paid. That is the purpose of this resolution, to authorize the new Treasurer, Amy Wells, and or Chris Langford, to request tax advances from the county auditor.
So the Treasurer recommends the Board of Education approve the fiscal item as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries 4 to 0. Our next item is Transportation Services Request for Proposal. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, this is an item that I think Yes, this is an item that I think several of our bus drivers here to hear about, so I want to take a little bit of time on this. What we have here is a request for proposals to potentially outsource transportation services for the district. What would happen if the board approves this is tomorrow, this would go out on our website and would be submitted to different agencies that are interested in doing this. The board has at no time determined to do this at all. They just have directed us to look at the possibility of saving money through outsourcing transportation. The only way to figure that out is to actually do a formal RFP process and bring the proposals in. You can only deal with estimates and quotes so long, you have to actually have actual proposals to see. So this is the initial RFP service to, request for proposals to be published on our website and submitted to various vendors. We will have a mandatory meeting, and at that meeting, we'll have addendum and an alternate one as well. So this one has, is to basically take over the system completely, so all transportation services provide buses, et cetera. The addendum will be to, for us to continue to own our own buses and then to contract out the services. So we'll have two different proposals that we'll get quotes on. So the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the transportation services RFP as listed.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And I think with our upcoming potential building program and moving buildings around and relocating personnel and facilities and infrastructure, I think it's critical that we at least do our due diligence. And there's a lot of things that go into the mix of the big plans that the district has over the next year, so I think it's important to evaluate this. So, and I think this will be, give us a good measuring stick of what the cost would be in the future. Is there any other discussion?
Just to emphasize, this is, in no way has any decisions been made, but this is the only way, if we don't get all the facts, to even see if it's something we would consider or not.
Is there any other discussion?
Sure. Some districts have contracted out, some districts have not, some have looked at it and decided not to. Nothing has, nothing has been decided yet. I went to a seminar at the Ohio School Board Association Capitol Conference about transportation issues. You know, it's really, it just comes down to a case-by-case basis.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call for a vote. The motion carries four to zero. Our next item is the approval of long-term substitute administrative contract.
Yes, this is an administrative long-term sub. This is for an assistant principal at Corin High School to fill in for Gail Davis, who retired effective December 31st. So this will be immediately, because she is currently on leave until the end of the year, end of the calendar year, and then she'll be retired. So this will be to fill up that, fill that position. Superintendent recommends the board of education approve the long-term substitute administrative contract as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries four to zero. We have another certified licensed personnel item. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, this is the contract that you asked me to add to the agenda. So the first one is for a treasurer consultant. So this would be for Larry McDonough to continue as a consultant January 1st through February 28th, as Amy Wells, the new treasurer, gets acclimated to the district. So this is the board's prerogative to approve this treasurer's consultant contract.
And I would look for a motion from a fellow board member to approve this, the purpose of it being so that Larry's around on an as-needed basis if we should have a particular issue come up that we could use his assistance with.
Second.
The motion was moved by Mr. Harlow and seconded by Mr. Detschel. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. And the motion for the consulting agreement is approved. Our next item would be Dr. Jackson?
And this is a similar agreement. This one is for Amy Wells, the new treasurer, to act as a consultant between November 1st and December 31st, and that will give her time to meet with Mr. McDonough to review various processes and procedures and get acclimated as well. So again, this is the board's prerogative to approve the contract.
And I would have a question for Mr. McDonough. I believe Amy was in for four hours one day in October. And we had discussed that.
Yes, sir. The contract is modified to the effect of October 20th.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I see that. I was looking at part two where it says after November 1st. So we would need that to be after?
No, here it is.
Okay. Is that what's?
Yep.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay.
The printed copy in the folder has it say October 20th.
Right here on the, we're not looking at this, we're looking right here. What's on our October 20th.
I was looking right here where it says it fixes a compensation after November 1st on part two. But it's understood that it's the October 20th. Okay. So as it's a board item, I would ask the board for someone to make a motion that we approve a consulting agreement for Amy Wells, that she may come to the, come in and work in our office a couple of times or to get acclimated to what we're doing here at the district, and we would pay her the amount in the contract on an hourly basis to be here. I spoke to Amy last Friday. She has indicated she plans on being here on November 19th and on a date in December. And generally, it was her feeling it would be around 50 hours, although this consulting agreement does not limit that. But that's kind of what Amy Wells' plans are for a conversation I had with her last week. So I would look for a board member to motion to approve this.
Second.
The motion's been moved by Mrs. Detschel and seconded by Mr. Detschel. Is there any other discussion?
None.
Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. And the consulting agreement motion is approved. And we'll move on to our next item.
I flipped it off.
And we'll stand by for a moment. Due to technical difficulties, please stand by.
Gee, can you tell who did that?
I didn't single you out, Pam.
No, my facial expression.
Okay, so with the certified licensed personnel items, we have two tutors, three home instructors, four extra duty contracts, one event worker, one volunteer coach, and a resolution to hire six non-licensed coaches. Superintendent recommends the board of education approve the certified licensed personnel items as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries four to zero. Our next item is a classified personnel item.
Yes, we have a resolution to recommend termination of employee contract. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the resolution as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries four to zero. And we have another classified personnel item. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have six initial appointments, we have several classified substitutes, and we have five changes in status. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries four to zero. Next item is a curriculum and instruction item.
Yes, we have an overnight field trip for the Northwest High School Band and Orchestra teachers, as Tim Hunning, Sarah Boys, and Cassie Crawford, that would like to take 80 students to Cedar Point and to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame up in Sandusky in Cleveland in May of 2015, and that the students would miss one day of instruction. The superintendent recommends the board of education approve the overnight field trip as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call a vote. The motion carries four to zero. Our next item is a business item. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have a couple, or just one item here under business, and I will turn it over to the representatives from Rothlesko Partnership that give the board an update on the master facility plan. We do have some preliminary recommendations that the board needs to discuss, and we were hoping to get a little bit of direction in terms of next steps and what type of input we need from the community.
All right, I think we're going to pull the PowerPoint. Okay, so we've, we're going to divide this into two parts. One is the finance committee work and then the facility and committee work. We're going to open up our questions. If we, you know, feel free, I think it would be, it works better if you ask questions along the way we, we don't wade through that. So let's lead off with the finance piece, and Larry and I led that committee, and I don't see any of the committee members in, but we actually had a very good, I thought we had a very good committee. We took a look at a number of items, and Larry was very instrumental in providing information on the forecasts and how the impacts and all of these are coming. So let's, let's talk about, I guess I'm doing the clicking here, so. So I want to go through these, and then on the next two slides, and it came from them all at once, there's some things that I think the board may want to think about and consider that came into our discussions within the committee. But initially, when we began to think about the availability of funds, where the funds were available, how much in funds, Larry, Larry kind of led that discussion, and we talked a little bit about what the debt limitation is for the district. Every district has, has a ceiling on what you can borrow. There are a couple provisions in the law that get beyond that, but pretty much you have that debt ceiling. And at the time of Larry's calculations, it was about $112, $115 million. And while that may be good to think about as a, as a final sum, the committee was not comfortable recommending to you that you would borrow up against that ceiling, because once you do, you really run the risk of if you do need to borrow money for the district, you have no capacity to go to. So, so for, and the number we could agree with, we took 80% of that number, which ended up being about $90 million, that we thought you could comfortably work with as a ceiling amount, and we were not comfortable recommending going beyond the 90 million. And that was even before, because our committee was always peeking ahead, were they not, Larry, to find out what the facilities committee was doing, to see what the cost of the project was? So they really had no idea what the total cost we're going to commit at. We really committed to saying, hey, let's think about for the district, you know, what's your limitation? So the $90 million was really the limitation. It's all based on the debt that you can borrow from. So that, that led us to really kind of looking at three funding options. Obviously, when you do bond issue, you can offer the community an opportunity to vote on that bond. A $90 million bond issue approximately in millage for the district, I think Larry had calculated it around 3.4, 3.5. And so that would generate $90 million, and obviously, you could put a bond issue on and generate that. We talked about that.
And that's 3.4 mils?
3.4.
$90 million. I read something in the paper the other day, another school district, and I was talking about, and theirs was 11 mils. Explain that difference, what that means.
So you have, you have a property valuation in Northwest?
Yep.
So one mil will generate X amount of dollars based on the valuation. So the district of you has a different valuation, therefore, to generate the same amount of dollars, they've got to assess their residents more millage.
It costs them a lot more money.
Right. So they have less, they have less houses out there, or more houses of lower value, and therefore, they've got to assess more. So whether three is high, lower, indifferent, you need to leave, you can do three and a half, three and a half will generate what the committee was recommending is a total amount, which would be the $90 million. So that's one option. You always have that option to bond issue, and you can certainly put that on. So we stepped away from that, and Larry gave a couple of presentations on the five-year forecast, because we wanted to see what was coming up in terms of, you have some levies coming up that impact your operating cost. We were interested in seeing what you had in, your health of your forecast and so forth. So you actually have two renewal levels, renewal levies coming, one in '15 and one in '17. And I believe the one in '15 is four and a half, and the one in '17 is a little bit bigger than that, five and a half. Five foot one. Those are renewals. Those will generate an X, the same amount of dollars each time they're put on the ballot because of House Bill 920. They're in your operating, they're, they're part of your operating dollars. And so we looked at both of those as maybe a way to provide the board with another option. And that would be considering using one of those renewal levies as an opportunity to consider a bond issue at the same, as a replacement for that renewal. And what would that do to the forecast? Now, you'll notice in the things that we want you to think about, you're really going to have to look very hard about what that does to your forecast. You've done a great job, I think, over the last four or five years of creating a, you know, very efficient and healthy forecast. You know, you've got a five-year forecast that shows a positive balance over that entire time, and that, not a lot of districts have that currently. So you've done a great job with that. And so by not renewing an operating level, you're going to impact your forecast. So we, we talked about that. Larry walked the committee through a couple scenarios. One of the, one of the members of the committee said, well, what if we do something in '15 with a portion of it and do it again in '17? We ran that scenario out. We did a report, we took the '15 request, took it off the forecast, put it on as a bond request at three and a half, added the mil to the other part of that, so that we were taking everything away from the operating and looked at, see what would happen in the forecast. And you're, you still have dollars available at the end of the forecast. So it is, it is an option. Now Larry wanted to point out on that, if you go and take the '15 renewal and you do three and a half mils, if you're doing the math, you've still got a mil left over that you could renew for operating. But, but that will have to look different.
It would. It would not be an emergency levy. Basically, they were looking at combining the bond issue with, with renewal levy as one ballot issue, which you legally can do. But in order to do that, the operating piece of that would have to be, which you're more familiar with, a continuing levy. It would have to be permanent. It could not be an emergency levy that turns out three or five years down the road. So that's one of the key differences in looking at this. But the idea was to take, you know, 90 million, my calculation was about 3.3 mils, based on a 35-year bond issue at 4.75% interest rate. The remainder is a little over, about one and a half mils or so, two mils, taking a portion of that and keeping it in the operating and then doing the combined levy in calendar 2015. When you do that, the five-year forecast remains robust, fairly robust, assuming passage of the 2017 emergency levy, remains fairly robust probably through 2020. So it clearly is an option, and it is kind of where the finance committee was headed. And I think if they were going to, would make a formal recommendation to the board, that's what they would recommend.
No, we, we had a lot of conversations about '15 and '17, and obviously, we settled on '15. You know, we, you don't know what, what bond rates are going to look like two years from now. I can probably tell you.
What's the bond rate now?
Well, we did off of 4.75, so we, I'm going to ask the districts to getting bond rates lower than that. So you probably have the best climate. Now, a lot depends on how you're viewed out in the financial world and selling your bonds, but you're probably not going to, if we're waiting for rates to drop, they're not dropping any, probably any lower than they're dropping. So waiting to '17 really may put that in jeopardy, and, you know, one tick up, you know, percent tick, we did a few of those, really, you know, creates a bigger millage amount as you wait. So that, we really kind of settled on '15. Now, again, we use 90 million as the, as the level. You obviously, anything in between that, you can do anything to, if you do the '15, you know, if you do, as we did on number three, if you, if you did a three mil levy and the one and a half came off, you really have to assess that, what's that additional millage amount coming off that's coming off your operating? You know, while, while you still have a robust five-year forecast, at some point, it's, you're five or six or seven years from now, you're going to have to address the fact that you have less operating millage because you, you exchanged it for the bond. But you're, but you're in a great position to think about that. But you're in a great position to think about that. If you did not have a robust five-year forecast, you probably would only be considering number 1 because you need every operating dollar to operate, but you can make that trade-off. The other thing we looked at in the points to consider is we looked at saying, okay, so you do have a robust forecast, what if you take some of those dollars away and use those instead of going for a bond? And we felt that you've done such a great job on the operating dollars, that that would make such a debt right up front in your operating costs, that we would probably, we would recommend you take a long, hard look on whether or not, say, well, we could pull 20 million out and do something with it versus, what do you do with, you can do maybe more with the bond, get a favorable rate at a lower rate and not impact your operating as dramatically as you might by pulling dollars out.
Tony, can I just ask a question or clarify? So, it was a 4 and 3/4% rate, what's the length of a, we talk about 3 and 1/2 mils for 90 million, is it 35, was it 30?
I think we did.
Yeah, that was calculated at 35.
35.
Which was just an estimate as to the length of the levy, so.
Isn't the max you can go 37 years?
40.
40?
Well, it's a weighted average, depends on exactly what you're doing. If you're just doing construction and not including furniture fixtures and those kinds of things, you could go 40 years just on the building and the building envelope. And once you start factoring in equipment, furniture and stuff like that, which does not have it for 40 year useful life, you have to weigh all that. Generally, 37 years is the maximum most major construction projects go, especially when it involves new equipment, new furniture and those kinds of things.
So, we used 35.
Okay.
And I guess we get to that point where you make a decision, you could run all those scenarios and think about, we thought 15 was the, if you're gonna think about doing that, that's the optimal time. In fact, we get done, before we're done with the finance, Larry's gonna, you're gonna be pretty surprised because the timeline's gonna be pretty short if you try to do something at your next opportunity, which will be May. So, it just, you need to start thinking about the financial pieces now because you're gonna make a decision and that will hold into what, you know, what the facility piece is going to. Thing to think about, we begin with the 15 and 17 renewals, now the law could change, the law says right now those renewals, the 10% rollback and the remainder of the homestead exemption for those that is protected under there, the state's paying that 12 and 1/2%. As soon as you go to change those renewals to something else, you're gonna lose that piece.
Wow.
Everybody loses that. So, that's why we didn't, when we started talking about split these and do maybe half in 15 and half in 17, but when you do that, then you damage both of those. So, if we do 15, if it still exists in 17, where the state's still picking up the 10% and the 2 and 1/2, then you'd still have that opportunity to do a renewal, get all those, you had the state participate in those dollars amount. So, that was our reasoning behind thinking about 15 or 17. So, the bottom line is that you, in order to generate the money, obviously, you've gotta raise it through a bond. If you're gonna do it up to the deck capacity, you don't have enough to do that with your carryover, even though you have a robust forecast, you don't have 90 million dollars that you could tap. You may have some, but you don't. And how you do it really is the thing that you're gonna think long and hard about. And then, if you do a kind of a trade-off, what's the impact gonna be on your forecast? So, I think we covered a lot of this. So, you wanna share the timeline, Larry?
Why don't you go ahead and go through, because I gotta put another flash drive in to get to that, so.
I think we covered all of these. The other thing, the last one is, and we talked about separating these out. So, you put a 3 and 1/2, 3 and 1/2 bond with a 1 mil permanent operating. And I think we all felt we would be better off combining them, because if you separate them out, you create choices where maybe you didn't wanna have a choice, you know.
You pass one and the other.
Well, you pass, so instead of getting your renewal at 4 and 1/2 mils, you get a renewal, you get a renewal at 1, and then the bond goes down and then you compromised your operating and didn't get your bond dollars that you needed at the same time. So, I mean, there's, you have to decide what you wanna do politically with that, but usually, you know, in the superintendent world, we, soon as we separate things out, you gotta explain why they're separated. And this is gonna take some explaining to do because you had a 4 and 1/2 renewal on, you're coming at, in essence, you're coming back with, you could come back with close to the same thing, but it's gonna look really different. And if the goal is to do this without really raising taxes, which I think you have an opportunity to do, it's gonna take some explaining how that's gonna happen. By separating them, you're gonna have to talk about how those two things work. They don't work separated to get where you wanna go. So, that was the reason why we thought, if you're gonna do that, you can certainly do that, but you're gonna have to think about, how do you explain to the community what you're really doing is taking a 4 and 1/2 mil levy, trying to create a bond around it so that they, you're not raising their taxes.
Bottom line is it gonna raise, is it gonna raise taxes or decrease taxes?
Right. And you have a great opportunity to put the bond out without raising taxes, if you choose not, if you choose to work around your five-year forecast. So, I'm looking at Larry, did I cover anything, Larry? So, do you wanna do your, can you get your piece?
Let me, Tony, real quick on, just on the rollback piece, I think that's important for the board to consider. So, even, you know, you can say, we currently have a 4 and 1/2 mil operating and we replace that with some sort of combination bond operating at 4 and 1/2 mil. We won't get any more money per year, but it shifts back from the state, that 12 and 1/2% shifts from the state. Not everyone gets the 2 and 1/2%, but nearly everyone gets the 10% residence. It shifts from the state back to the property owners. Now, another option would be possibly to reduce the overall from a 4 and 1/2 down to a 4, which would maybe counteract some of that. So, there's some, there's some different possibilities, but it's gonna be hard because the way that shifts the burden around, you know, you could still have someone actually having increased, possibly having increased tax bill because of that 10% rollback that would no longer be in effect.
So, it'll depend what your final millage amount is when you put this on. And we're assuming when you go out and do, you know, the time you do this, some rates are gonna stay low, rates all of a sudden jump or something, you know, your millage rate would go up to generate the same amount. But if you drop, you know, if you don't ask for 90, all of those things play in, the total amount you ask for is gonna determine, make all that. But I think you have an opportunity, even with losing that, which you had nothing to do with, you know, that's a state requirement, I think you can still make the same balance of that. If the net, if everybody's net tax bill stays the same, you can still go for bond. The problem is that we, now that we peeked ahead to, and Rob's gonna do the facility piece, even though it sounds like a lot of money, and it is obviously, 80 or 90 million dollars for bond, it's gonna, it doesn't chew, it doesn't chew up the entire project. So, we came to the realization, no matter what we tried to do or make recommendations, we were gonna be able to provide you with all the resources you needed today to do everything that may be on your plate. So, we tried to do, give you as much as we could in terms of what you could get after, and then you're gonna have to figure out, okay, if we do that, the next part of this is, where does it fit? And so, where do we start and what do we knock off first in terms of facility needs?
Did we have any, was there any calculation or feedback based on what the taxable value of property in the district will be next year because, I was there, obviously that's factor two.
With the update going on this year, we hope, the auditor's website says the information's available out there. All the county treasurers are meeting with Auditor Rhodes on December 5th, so we should get, you know, the firm update numbers then. And once we've got that, certainly, a lot of this will be recalculated depending on whether the values go up or go down. So, yeah, we expect to have that within the next couple of weeks.
The other piece to consider also, if the board proceeds with some sort of combined levy, is by making the small piece of the operating, so if we do go with a 3 and 1/2 mil bond and the remaining of it and operating, you make it permanent, it gets us out of that two to three-year cycle. So, currently, if we continue to pass five-year emergency levies like we have, it means every two to three years, we have to pass one. So, 15, we have to pass one, 17, 20, 28, it just keeps, it keeps going. This would get us out of that cycle, the one, the smaller operating would now be permanent. And so, then every five years, the board could make a determination on that operating, emergency operating in 2017, do they wanna decrease it? Can we decrease it? Do we need to increase it? I mean, there's different possibilities there to consider as well. But right now, I, my concern is that we have something called levy fatigue, where we're constantly going to the voters every two to three years and, you know, you always risk them just at some point saying, you know, enough's enough, we're not voting, even though it's not an increase, you know, it's just a renewal, it's just a concern.
I just, my other concern is too, not recently, but in years past, I've seen other districts where they've passed the bond levy and build these nice shiny buildings and then the operating levy doesn't pass. Then they don't have any money to do what needs to be done, which is educating the kids inside the building. So, we've gotta really think all this through, what we're doing.
Right. And you've done a great job. You really have a robust, Larry described it well, your forecast is healthy. And we believe you can do some level of this and still have a healthy forecast. At some point, you know, even if you do nothing, you just do the renewals, there's a decision out in the future where you're operating, you'll need more operating dollars at some point. But it's out there far enough that you've got a great window to think about doing this and keep your operating, meeting the needs of the kids. I mean, I've been here twice and I've heard, even the programs that I have a presentation on are outstanding. I mean, I did literacy program the last time, the art program and the work at the middle school. I mean, you do great work here. So, you don't wanna compromise that going forward at all. And I think you said, I think you've got, I think the committee felt you had a really great window to think about this now. So, this is the right time to think about this. At least from the financial standpoint. So, Larry's gonna finish up because he's gonna talk about, if you do the levy in 15, there is some calendar constraints that you're gonna have to think about. So, with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Rob and he's gonna do the facility piece. And then I'll sit down and come back and ask the president if I can.
Yep. Thank you. All right. As you know, we had two committees going on simultaneously, the facility committee and the finance committee. We had them both looking at the issues separately initially so that we could focus on the building needs, you know, separate from the financial condition and then vice versa. And then, in the end, we brought the two committees together to help synthesize all the different options. Basically, what the facility committee, actually both committees in the end concluded is that there were roughly three different options to bring to the board. And I'm gonna go through each of those three options. You know, we went from 20 options down to about three. And I just wanted to show you, each option, we thought it was helpful to show a feeder map on what was existing and then with each option to show what would happen as you move forward. But if you, if you look at this existing feeder map, you'll see, you know this probably better than anybody, where your elementary schools feed into your middle schools and then feed into your high schools. So, right now, you have a number of different types of buildings, you have a K3, 4, 5, 6, 8s, you have K2 and 3, 5, you have a lot of different grade configurations. And I think as we move forward with the committees, it would determine that the best way to look at this would be to move to a K5 situation all across the board. The first master plan we're presenting is you would go to two high schools, three middle schools, five elementary schools and then your PK. And we tried to lay them out visually like this, where you would create three new elementary schools, and I'll show you the numbers on those. But this graph sort of shows how the dark would be new buildings and the lighter ones would be renovations. Basically, in this scheme, your new buildings would be elementaries and then you would renovate your middle schools and high schools. Really, in all three schemes, I think it was pretty well determined that your greatest need, facility-wise, is in your elementary schools. And that sort of, you go back to the assessment that we did, that really supports that. When you're looking at the dollars of the A1 scheme, what we did is we divided, you remember in the assessments, we showed you what you would need to do in the next five years to address needs and then what you would do over time after five-plus years to bring the buildings totally up to current state standards. In this scheme, we looked at three new K5 elementary schools to replace your other elementary schools. And there would be about 875 to 900 students in each, based on the enrollment that you have. And when you run those out in terms of square footage and cost per square foot, you get about a $21 million building. So, each building would be $21 million. And we show where you would build each of these possibly, one at the Pleasant Run site, one at the Struble site, one at Taylor. And I'll show you the feeder map, but that gives you one in the north, in the middle and then in the south. We talked about demoing then these buildings. Obviously, if you're building on these sites, you would have to demo these buildings. The other three buildings.
You'd be demoing which ones?
Pleasant Run.
Okay.
Struble and Taylor, because those would be the three sites that you would build new at at this point. We tried to test each of the sites to make sure that you could build the building. And you're limited in size of sites, obviously. And then you could determine what to do with the other three buildings, whether they would remain, whether you would sell them, whether you would demo them or use them. And then, that's the column with the five-plus years. If you were going to do everything, if you were gonna do total renovation on the middle schools to bring them up to state standards and then totally renovate the high schools. And you can see, as we were talking about, that 208 million dollars is obviously way more than the capacity you have. So, it just, it becomes a phased type of project if you're going to do everything. Now, if you look at just bringing the other buildings up to what you would need to do in five years, kind of the immediate needs, then these are the numbers that we worked with. The same for the new buildings, obviously. And then, as you renovated the buildings, if you look at our assessment, these are the numbers that we used. And that would bring you, I wanted to have Dick explain this number. We put, we put another number in here to accommodate upgrades in technology if you were just going to look at the five-year.
Yeah. And why that got pulled out as a separate number? When we look at the five-year renovation item and we were weighing, and we talked about this in previous updates to boards as well, we're weighing, what are the most important things, what, where do you get the most bang for your buck if you do it today? New roofs, new windows, some of the accommodations for the handicap, the more immediate needs. And what we did move out of that, what we pushed off into the future, would be things like upgrading to accommodate air conditioning. And as we realized, we looked at it, I went back and I talked to our engineers and I said, if you don't upgrade your lights and your air conditioning in, my example would be the middle schools, either Pleasant Run, Colran or White Oak, if you don't do that and we still accommodate all the upgrades to the IT, the technology system. And in talking to the staff, that was really one of the top three concerns that they had. They wanted to be able to teach using today's technology. So, we looked at that and we went back into the assessments we did this on and said, okay, some of them have moderately good electrical systems, some of them, for instance, Colran Middle School, and their system is so out of date that if we tried to do technology at this point, it would be nearly impossible. So, that one, for instance, needs to have an update, which would take the most money to do. Other ones like Montford Heights, they're in good shape and you can do that technology too much. So, what we did was we took that and separated that out as a line item to bring those electrical systems up there.
So, actually, coming up with the, in terms of the renovations that you would need to do right away and the technology to bring it up to, the electrical systems to bring them up here, we came up with a total of 87 million. up here, we came up with a total of $87 million. That was totally separate than the $90 million finance team was looking at. It just so happened that they sort of aligned here. Yeah, they fit together. And then after we got the two committees together, you know, it was obvious that since that could be done, it was, it was a great option to look at. Also, there was discussion about what if you could only do one building or if you wanted to do one building? We recommend that, because the elementary schools are in the greatest need, that if you were to do one building, you would replace Pleasant Run and Taylor. Those, we feel, are the ones that are in the greatest need if you're looking at the elementary schools. And so replacing those actually works out if you're going to make a K5 building, because those two, you have a K2 and a 3, 5, I believe. So bringing those two together, you'd have a K5 building. But of course, if you were just taking two buildings offline, you'd have to make it a little bigger than these, because you would be separating them into three here. But this is a possibility to do one building. You'd have to do it at the Taylor site, because that's your largest site. And it would cost $27 million. That's just for the new building itself. It wouldn't include any of the renovations at this point. So that kind of gives you the numbers to look at in the first scheme. You're going from 13 buildings then down to 11 buildings. And this is what the feeder map would look like, where you would renovate Monford and then that would feed into the White Oak Middle School. You'd have a new elementary school on the south and that would also feed into the White Oak, basically replacing two elementary schools here. And then they feed into the high school here. And then you have a new elementary school in the middle that would feed up to Pleasant Run and a new elementary school north that would feed into that. And then, obviously, feed into the high schools as you're doing right now. So basically, that gives you three new buildings, north, middle, and south there, which keeps kind of the feeder system that you have in the same general area. Then we have actually B1 and B2. Both of these look at one high school schemes. So in B1, you have one high school, one freshman school, three middle schools, five elementary schools, and a PK. Again, you'd have three new buildings, those are the dark on the slides here. But what would happen is you would renovate Northwest High School to a ninth-grade building and then you'd renovate Colrain High School to a 10, 12. And to do that, we'd have to put an addition on that building, but that way you'd get one high school. And in B1, we have the same basic configuration at the top of the chart here with three new elementary schools. And then you would renovate, as in A1, the middle schools. And the difference here is, what I explained, where you renovate Colrain to a 10, 12 and you'd have to put an addition on it. And those are the numbers. And then you would renovate the Northwest High School to a ninth-grade building. If you were doing the minimum amount of renovations, this is what you would do. Obviously, this line again is the total. But this scheme was about $98 million if you were to do that. Again, the technology number is the same. And here would be the feeder map for that, having the one high school at Colrain to accommodate all the 10, 12 students. You would renovate Northwest for the ninth grade and basically the three new elementary schools would feed as we showed before. But basically, you'd be centralizing the students to the Colrain High School for 10, 12.
And how many schools is that total?
That takes you to 11 buildings against that, 13 to 11. You're sort of repurposing the buildings. You still have the same amount. And then the last option we wanted to show was the one high school scheme again. You'd have one freshman school, two middle schools, five elementary schools, and a PK. And this is how this would, you have three new buildings, but only two new elementary schools. And you would be renovating one of your middle schools to an elementary school. And then you'd have a new freshman building at Colrain and then you'd renovate Colrain to a 10, 12 building. And this, basically, what would happen is your Northwest building would be renovated to become a middle school. So the difference here is you would have two new K5 buildings and you'd renovate Pleasant Run Middle School to a K5 elementary school, bringing you three K5 elementary schools again, but this would involve renovation. When you renovate Pleasant Run Middle School to a K5, you need to renovate Northwest High School to a middle school. So this kind of all snowballs down, but it gives you an opportunity to really have one campus at the high school. And that's just like the last scheme, you'd renovate the high school, Colrain, to a 10, 12, put an addition on it, and then you'd have a new freshman building at the Colrain site. So that would be one campus for the high school where the previous scheme was still having the ninth grade at Northwest. And that brings it to about $108 million. Looking at the feeder map, very similar with the two new elementary schools. And this worked out well, because you still would have three elementary schools, one south, one middle, and one north by renovating Pleasant Run. So that worked out pretty good. And then renovating Northwest High School to a middle school, that centralizes, gives you a middle school, south and north. And then everybody would come together for high school at Colrain.
How many buildings is that?
That, if you're doing 10 buildings, that actually worked out to give you the least amount of buildings in the end.
Right.
Rob, real quick, just a comment on the two one-high-school plans. If you could, could you go back to the graph, the chart with the B1?
Yes.
Because one of the challenges the committee had with trying to figure out a one-high-school plan are some inefficiencies that occur with the size of the buildings and locations. So in this one, you'll see that we're adding on about 45,000 square foot at Corrin High School to make it a 10, 12 building for the entire district. But at the same time, you can see the note at the very bottom of that page, it says, Northwest High School to a freshman building would only need 142,000 square foot for those students, but yet it's actually 213,000 square foot. So you have a space there, you have almost 70,000 square foot extra at Northwest High School, but at the same time, you're adding on to Corrin High School. So that was one of the issues, what we're trying to figure out, and there really is no efficient way to do that. If you look at B2, if you could flip that down to the chart for B2, one way we kind of take care of that is by, this would be another option, is where Northwest High School becomes a middle school. Well, we originally just kept all three middle schools and so Northwest High School becomes basically a new, becomes Pleasant Run Middle School, that building. Well, in that situation, that building's almost twice as big as you need, so you almost have like almost 100,000 square foot extra while you're adding on the other one. So we thought, well, why don't we combine two middle schools into one and it's just about the right size? The problem is, that means in that situation on B2, you have the entire Colrain Middle School attendance area going all the way to Northwest High School for middle school. So that goes down to, I think, the Galbuth Road area, about, close to the Galbuth Road, going all the way up to Northwest High School for middle school. But that is to make the most efficient use of the building. You know, the other option would be to leave all of them, all three of those middle schools open, but then you're going to have a lot of wasted space at Northwest High School, which would be Pleasant Run Middle. So those are a couple of challenges we had with those one-high-school plans that we tried to put together.
I was pointing out to Rob, I think if you have to think about two, is if you chunk this out, because elementary kind of sets itself up, you know, by getting everybody K5, you really do, you do some great improvements to the economic purpose. You've got rebidings, you've got all these different organization structures. But if you do go to do something, say you're going to do the freshman building in the high school, you're really going to have to, you probably can't get away with just renovations. You're going to have to go in and do that bigger number, the 44, the 10, and the 32, which is going to, if you're thinking about a $90 million project, that's going to eat up your project dollars. And so you're not going to have any dollars to show anywhere else. So you're really going to have, I think, when you think about this from a financial piece, because you can't do everything at one time, where you're, you're going to have to prioritize of where these things fit long-term. Because whatever you do, if you say you're going to do the elementaries first, then the middle school and the high school, other than the renovations, the things that Dick talked about, are really going to have to wait for the next conversation, whenever that time is. And it works vice versa. If you decide, hey, we're going to work on the high school, middle school stuff first, you're going to put all the elementary stuff off somewhere down the road. So that's, I think it, it looks obvious, but just to make sure that, you know, that was, that's the thing we struggled with as we looked at these, as these options, is that, so what do you do first? And I think the committee really kind of spent a lot of time on the elementary, primarily because Dick was telling us that the age of those buildings and all that, that's why those demos, is where it needed to happen first, because if you delay that, you may be really causing yourself some issues down the road, just from a cost standpoint. So they all have merit, it's just that you're going to, you don't have all the dollars you need to do everything at one time.
Rob, in the scenario where we work on the elementary schools first, and you mentioned the Taylor site, is that if you had to do one, how would that, how would that work? Would you move those students out for a year or?
You would really have to, I mean, we looked at the site to do a building that size, ideally, it'd be best to move the kids out of there into, you know, like Beavis or something like that. There may be a way to do it. We'd really have to design the building, you know, in a little more detail to prove that out. There may be a way to build it while the other one was still.
Well, you have the additional land there where the bus compound is and...
You also have, you have the woods, there's a dramatic slope there, but you could, you could do some work in that wooded area to do some cut and fill and level out, where you may be able to put the building on that one side. So we'd have to take a hard, hard look at it.
I, it looks like a lot of work has gone into everything already. I think what would, might be looked at as an economic boon to the community would be, I think when folks are moving and buying houses, it's when they have little kids and newer elementary schools might be a better draw to get some families, you know, moving back into the Northwest school district. So I, I think that...
That's interesting to me, to work on the elementary side of it first, because, you know, people are young and they have children and wow, there's a new school, I want to live near that. And it can really help with, you know, some housing improvements and growth in those areas. So I, I think that's interesting that you've looked that up.
Yeah, if you, if you do the three new buildings at these sites for certain, you can do the new building while the other ones are in, still in operation, because it was just the larger one that was...
Because if I'm looking at it, if we just did one building, which I personally think that's crazy to just address one, but if we would do just the one building, it's going to be a little over $27 million for that building, because it has to be larger.
Correct.
Where we could build three new elementaries at 21 million for each one. Correct? So I mean, you're talking, and I understand why the Taylor one's more if we're only doing that one, but...
I mean, it's basically the same cost per square foot for the building. You're just, in order to do one building, you have to replace two completely. And so the, when you add the Pleasant Run and Taylor students together, you get a little larger building if you're only going to do one.
And if we only did one project, it looks like, would that affect 11, am I reading this right? 1175 students out of our district is what we would be for the...
For the new building.
For the new building.
If you just did one new building, otherwise it's 900 times, it's 2,600.
Exactly.
I think the other thing to consider with the elementaries, you know, at one point, I think I've heard different comments, like we should build something every 10 years. We currently have 13 buildings and so to get, that would get us on a 130-year replacement cycle, which is just, is not probably sustainable. The other thing to consider with that is if you only replace, if you only build one building that replaces two buildings and you're going to wait another 10 years to replace another one, what building, what elementary building particularly are you going to wait 10 years to replace? So let's say we replace Taylor and PRE, we're going to have to put quite a bit of money into Wygo and Struble over the next 10, 20 years, if that's what's, how long it's going to take to replace those two buildings. So we have to think about it like that in terms of, you know, realistically, you should be looking at a, you know, 60, 65-year replacement cycle of buildings, at least doing major refurbishments, if not replacing them. But we have an opportunity here to do quite a bit of work, address our needs with the elementaries, and the real potential of not raising taxes, which is pretty amazing when you consider where we are right now. And a lot of it's because of the force side of the board in the past and making the cuts they've made to get us in the financial position we're in and also passing the last operating levy that has allowed us to do that as well. We're in a very good position to have a lot of options without raising taxes. I mean, that's, that's a significant advantage that we have. And we're not, we're not talking about one building. We have the possibility of building three buildings and renovating all the rest with some minor renovations and still not raise taxes. So the board really has an opportunity to really put their mark on this district for a long time.
And it would impact all the kids or the majority of the students in the district versus 1,000?
Yes.
I think there's a, I think there's a good case to be made for the three elementary buildings, especially because of the need, the age of the buildings, and also the fact that, as Dan pointed out, you're, you're really affecting families' long-term decisions in terms of where to locate with the elementary schools. That looks, that looks like a good option. Also, the other options look like even just the five-year alone, they would exceed our bonding, what we've probably decided our bonding capacity could be. You know, if we did go to the other options, we'd be looking at running, running up against our limit if we decided to, you know, finance the entire amount.
You'd have to make some choices in terms of the renovations to bring that back down.
The reason that, again, go back to the bond, you can pay out, and one of these we talked about with the committee was, we did it at 80% level. Remember, as you pay your bond down, just say you, you just think about this in two, five-year increments, the first, this is the first five, and you're going to have to still deal with the high school and the middle school and think about that five years from now. As you pay your bond down, your bond, your debt limitation will grow and if your housing values increase, your total borrowing capacity will grow. So it probably will, maybe that won't grow to get you the whole thing, but you'll have another opportunity. The board will, five years from now, take a look at this project, go back to it and say, okay, we didn't do everything we wanted to do, maybe in a portion of that, whether it's the middle school or the high school. But now we have, it's a new day and we know what we have again, and so how do we use what the resources in the district to address that issue? So they were thinking about that. They were thinking about, okay, you're not going to get all done now, but five years from now, you know, you're all here again, you're going to have, you're going to remember this conversation, say, okay, so what do we have left to do some of these other things? Plus, you're going to have enrollment changes probably in this time span, so you kind of know what you've got in the elementary now. That lower number's going to come through the high school, the middle school, and then change some of your numbers of how you treat your middle schools and your high schools at that time. So you're really buying some time for those later decisions at the upper levels. And I agree with Dan. I think the, the opportunity to really fix the elementary issue from a, just from a programming standpoint and where you strategically locate these buildings, it will enhance the district. But no matter where you go, you'll have, you'll either be a brand-new renovated building or you'll be in a new building with the new technology, enhanced programming, all of that, at the earliest possible level. And then with anticipation that somewhere down the route, my kids will be moving into, you know, renovated middle schools and renovated high schools. It's one way to think about the project.
Well, and I think, Ken, you touched on the, I mean, the educational piece of it, that's what we're here for. And if we only look at doing one building, then we're still back to, we're impacting the kids in that building and not the rest of our elementary kids. We're still going to be where we have K2 buildings and 3, 5 buildings and throwing good money into bad, trying to keep the roofs up and furnaces and everything else. I mean, I mean...
I think too, when you looked at one building, I don't think, you know, as a committee, never really looking at just, you know, doing one new building, but... never really looking at just, you know, doing one new building, but possibly doing some other renovations in the other buildings at the same time.
Right.
Considering the renovations, and doing this conversation we have with Todd, by doing the elementaries, that takes a huge thing off of your PI play. Because those buildings won't need a lot of work, which will allow Todd to use the PI money and focus in on, hey, what needs to happen at the high school, the middle school, and do more there, versus being stretched so thin, and trying to do everything for everything all at one time. So no matter where you pick and you choose, if you do the elementaries, you're gonna, you'll have, so you'll free up some dollars from an efficiency standpoint on your PI costs to address, because you're not gonna get everything done with the renovations, because you're getting some of the key pieces. So it was a lot of good stuff. I think it was...
I would like to make one other comment. About a month ago, when my wife's nieces and the band at Wenton Woods, I went to their football game, and they just ran a bond issue last week. They had a thirty-three million dollar contribution from the state, and they wanted to build two buildings, and their, their bond issue would have raised seventy-six million dollars. And I wanna say I read where it went down, fifty-seven to forty-three. Because what matters is, is what are people going to support in the community? I, I think we're all, this is the closest, we've had a full board come to thinking about building some new buildings in a very long time. The, so that's just something else to think about, is that Wenton Woods just went down last week trying to bond seventy-six million dollars. So...
Well, we can't, we can compare, then we can go turn around and flip and say, what, districts and the state? I mean, we're not apples to apples with Wenton Woods.
Right. What was the millage on that, Dan?
I mean, we could say, how many did pass?
On a hundred thousand dollar house, the cost would be twenty-four dollars and seventy-three cents a, a month. So it would be, you know, two eighty a year in additional taxes on a hundred thousand dollar house. But they also had a thirty-three million dollar contribution from the state, and I only, I only bring this up, Andrew, because we're gonna be nowhere if we don't get something passed. So it was...
Well, I think the key is, Dan, is the five of us here in leadership, and if we, if we believe in what we're doing, instead of working against each other like it's been in the past, that could be the key of making all the difference. Because we all have to be walking the same walk and, and talking the same talk. If two of us or three of us are out there explaining why we feel this is good, and there's one or two that are doing just the opposite, no, we won't get things passed.
Oh, agreed. There, there's also the whole specter of, and this just printed last week in the paper, and I've brought this up a year ago. Dusty Rhodes put this out last week, and it'll appear again December eleventh. This is the twenty thousand or so delinquent parcels in the, in the county. And some folks might want new stuff, and we all do, but you have to balance the needs of the district with the ability of people to pay. So I think we're somewhere in the middle of what we're gonna end up with. I certainly support getting some new buildings going, and we just, you know, and obviously Chris isn't here this evening, when we have the final discussion, it will certainly involve all five of us.
I think there's a couple considerations. It's typically not the doll, the total dollar amount that we're raising, but the millage amount, and what's it gonna cost people compared to what they're currently. And, and one thing that makes us unique is we have the real ability for this board to really leave a legacy for the students here without raising taxes. And that's something Wenton Woods wasn't able to do. And I don't know how many districts across the state are able to do something like that.
Oh, agreed. At the same time, I also don't wanna leave a, a legacy where future boards, there's a thirty-seven year bond hanging out there that, you know, fifty-two years old, I'll be in the poll by then, before that's ever paid off. And I don't wanna leave a legacy of debt. I would like to. And I think, I think we're really gonna get somewhere with this and figure out what we wanna do. But there's the whole, you know, all the other people out there are consideration also. So...
But that list in our district, if we don't come together and do something positive, is only gonna grow, because the people that, we're not gonna get new people moving in our district if we don't do something.
I'm the one advocating for some elementary schools, Dan, so I think we'll get somewhere.
Right. And I think, but, but your argument as far as, I mean, you, and if you go out in the community, Dan, and you use that data, and you try to compare us to Wenton Woods, you just heard, we have the opportunity of doing this and not raising anybody's taxes. That should be so easy to sell if all five of us believe it and agree to do it.
And if, if we go out and market one or two buildings, or the three elementaries, people might say, wow, they're not trying to replace everything like Cincinnati did or other districts did. Maybe we'll go ahead and, and give them the new three elementaries. You just, I'm just saying, there's, we're in the middle of a discussion still. So...
And I think that the last slide was the next steps. We were talking as, as committees on, you know, possibly the next step, doing some community or district engagement, possibly doing a survey, to, to vet some of these same options to some of the district staff, parents. You know, Andrew can speak of different opportunities that we were looking at.
Yeah. I'd like to mention a few things. We, we'd had a, if you look at these options, we had very similar options back in two thousand nine. We went out to the community. We had basically the A-1s, the same as we had before, and, and what happens is Beavis is now closed, but it basically accounts for that in the new plan, where we split Pleasant Run and put half of Pleasant Run with Welch in a new building, and the other half with Taylor in a new building. So it kind of redistributes to students and ends up with the same number of buildings. When we did this back in two thousand nine, I think it was sixty-eight percent favored two high schools and thirty-two percent favored one high school. So we have some feedback on that piece of it. We also did some information about millage and kind of the line, and it was just our parents, so it's hard to determine based on our parents. This situation, it may not be any mill, increased millage to do it. I do have a proposal from an, a gentleman named John Fox, who does some marketing, and he could do some polling for us. I'm trying to get some information through Fin Law in terms of what exactly we can ask, because there's a fine line in terms of asking about levies, and asking about buildings, and about the school district and things like that. So we'd have to be careful with that and get an opinion on that piece of it. But somewhere in the twelve-to-fifteen thousand dollar range, we could get a professional poll done for us, that would not just be our parents, but would also be a cross-section of the voters, the people that go, and they know through their data who actually votes, and they would find, and give us, bring us back information that would give us maybe more information in terms of what our non, non-parents think of the plan. Because ultimately, the percent, a large percentage of the voters will be non-parents. And when we go to these events, we need to present this, obviously, to get our parents enthused about it. But when we come back with just that data, it's gonna be skewed towards the positive, and this board needs as much information as possible. So that's one option, if the board wants to look at that, is to spend some money to do some polling information to get a, a larger consistency into our data, to come back with the board on that piece of it as well. I think it would also be easier to interpret the data if the board could possibly eliminate one of these three plans. We have two of the one high school plans. I don't know if they, if the board could look at both of those and, and determine which one we don't want feedback on, because that can somewhat skew the data as well, where it comes back twenty-five percent like this one high school plan, and twenty-five percent like this one high school plan. But if you combine them into one, it may be a different number, obviously. So I think it may give the, the board better data if we somehow eliminate one of those two plans to take to the public.
One plan's a hundred and eight million, so that's kinda out of our ranges anyway. Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I would, I would think so. I think that was just...
I would certainly like to get some input from Chris also, and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think this is important. Instead of us sitting up here guessing or thinking we know how everybody's gonna vote, absolutely, I think we should, should do that and not just poll our parents. Because you're right, the majority of our, of the people that are gonna be voting on this do not have kids in our schools, and we need to, you know, the, the more information we can find out ahead of time, I think that, that's better. Because if it comes back that they're not gonna support anything, then, I mean, we need to know that upfront.
I think the word...
No, no. I mean, if, if we can do these buildings and not raise taxes, where's the downside to that? Why would you wanna just build one building? Why not do one of these options, A-one or B-one, if we can do that and not raise taxes? I mean, what's, what's the downside to that?
My, my only concern with that is, is leaving a huge, long-term debt behind us.
Well, Dan, when you, when, when you put a bond up, and they're, they're averaging thirty-five, thirty-seven years, no matter if you're doing one school or two schools, you still have, I mean, you still are gonna have it. I mean, we need to look forty, fifty years down the road, not five years down the road. We don't need to look forty or fifty years down the road. Look at the condition of our schools. They're in crap condition.
We can't do anything and pay cash for it. We're gonna be in debt.
Bad, bad shape.
I, I don't think they're in a, the word you used to describe them, I think they're in decent condition, but it's time to think about replacing a couple of them.
It's time to make, it's time to make a decision and move forward.
Right.
And not thinking two or three years ahead. You gotta look thirty, forty years out for the school district and the community.
Oh, there's, there's no question, Jim. I'm looking thirty or forty years out, I'm thinking what the long-term ramifications are of that much debt. I look at what it's done to the county we live in, and the county's laid off a third of its employees trying to keep up with their debt service. Granted, ours is structured differently, but, you know, Hamilton County's an absolute mess from putting out a bunch of bonded debt.
Well, that's, that's comparing apples to oranges.
Well, I, you know, the twenty years from now, that some future board might have a different idea about what they wanna do. Bricks and mortar buildings might not be everything they are to the district today. You know, this, we're certainly heading into an electronic age. I'm, you know, leaning towards the elementary school model, which would be somewhere in the middle of what the architects brought forward, and what I, twenty percent of the board thinks we could afford. You know, and it's a discussion we need to have, and I'm, you know, there's a reason Chris isn't here tonight, and, and I just, when we get to that point in the discussion, we certainly need to have all thought.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't think this is anything where, where anybody's expecting us to make a decision tonight. But I, I think as a board, we should, I think we should consider polling our community, and...
Well, using the John Fox, I think the John Fox group just did Forest Hills, if I'm not mistaken, in Hamilton County.
And, and there's others out there, Allen Research, and a few others.
Didn't they just pass their levy out there at Forest Hills?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I think it passed. I'm not sure what the details were of it.
Yes.
Well, then we need to see that. If we're gonna have a paper, and you're gonna come to a board meeting with a paper to show what district failed, Forest Hills passed, I'd like that information, so I can sit here and read that, even though I don't think it's apples to apples.
Please bring it. I didn't, I didn't go to their football game. I went to the Wenton Woods football game to see my wife's niece.
Well, can we, I, can we all agree to go ahead and direct the superintendent to look into getting, starting with the polling? I mean, it sounds like everybody agreed that if we wanna go down to two, the hundred and eight million is, is too much. So that's probably a no-brainer of which one to eliminate.
I'll work on that with some other consultants out there as well, and get something going. It's, it won't take board approval, because it's less than twenty-five thousand, it won't be anywhere near that. So we'll, we'll figure something out as part of this process.
I'll, I'll give Chris a call tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll try to, yeah, just reach him today.
Yeah, and we are, if, the, this is the next piece we're gonna transition to, is in terms of the timeline. If the board wants to put this on in May, and typically, if you have an operating app, you typically do it in May. So then if you have to put it up again, you have November to do before it expires. There, we have a pretty tight timeline here. Considering we only have one December board meeting, we may need to reschedule one for the eighth. I know we can't the first because of some other issues, but we may need to schedule something on the eighth. But Larry, do you wanna kinda go through the timeline of when we have to get various resolutions passed? If, this is for a May, this is for a May election, if we wanna put the bond on in May?
Uh, yeah. A couple things real quick. So you kind of understand the tiering effect of, of passing a bond issue. The board can pass a bond issue up to one percent of its assessed, it's not up there, folks. Don't look, I'm talking off the top of my head right now.
Okay.
The board is permitted to pass debt up to one percent of its assessed valuation without a vote of the people. And that's essentially what you've done with your House Bill two sixty-four borrowing, and a couple other things you've done over the past couple of years. Up to four percent, a bond issue up to four percent of the assessed valuation, the board can go directly to the voters and request the voters to approve that. Once you get above four percent, the state superintendent of instruction and the tax commissioner from the higher department of taxation get into the game. And then that, that's why the timeline gets a little bit tighter, because now we have to pass a resolution advising them that we're gonna go for a bond issue that exceeds four percent of our assessed valuation. And that's where the first deadline comes in. It's this hundred and twenty-day deadline. So no, later than January fifth, the board has to adopt a resolution that basically has items one, two, and seven, eight. And it, to submit to the state superintendent of instruction, and that the commissioner, the higher department, or the department of taxation. That is your first resolution. Beyond that, let me go back up there. There's a couple other things that we also have to consider. We have to figure out what the millage amount's eventually gonna be, because then we have to certify the maximum maturity of that millage. There are other things in here. We've talked about retaining underwriters, retaining bond counsel. All those things have to be considered. So once we've done that, prior to January twenty-seventh, then we have to determine the exact principal amount of the bond issue. So by that point in January, we've gotta know what, what the plan is, what the cost is, contingencies, all that stuff has to be factored in, so we know exactly what the amount of the bond issue's gonna be. Because then we pass a resolution of necessity that we file with the county auditor's office, which that resolution of necessity is typical for a regular tax levy as well. If you're doing an operating levy, an emergency levy, you'd be doing the same thing. So now we're kind of in the same mode as just going for operating levy. And if you do a combined levy, then that's gonna come into play here, too. So we've gotta have all these, these ducks in a row to do it all at the same time. Then the county auditor will then return to us the certification of annual average millage for the bond issue. With that, then we're gonna have to know the length of the bond issue, the estimated interest rate, et cetera, et cetera, so the county auditor could do that calculation.
Could you go back to the January fifth for a second? Because I, it's important on that number seven, that we have to have that submitted to O D E and O D T by January fifth. So, you know, that's the first Monday in January, so we couldn't have a board meeting on that Monday for the board to authorize that, because that would be too late, because we would have to submit it that day. So we're likely have to do some of that in December.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good point. I should've said that. That's a good point. And I understand January fifth is the first day back from winter break. So I don't know what, how that's gonna play into doing everything. So, and once we've got the, we've got the information back from, the consents back from superintendent of public instruction, the tax commissioner, we've got the information back from the county auditor, then by the end of January, we need to file a resolution to proceed, which will incorporate all that information, has to be packaged, if you will, and all that gets filed with the Board of Elections, which has to be done down there, no later than February fourth, I believe. Right. So that's basically the timeline for having something on the ballot May fifth.
Sounds like we should schedule another meeting in December.
Well, that, that's if we exceed, wanna exceed the four percent bond limitation for that January fifth, the four percent. Go back to the other slide, please.
Well, we certainly would.
Well, we would. We're not gonna get much if we don't.
You're gonna be well above your four percent.
Yeah.
The whole idea was to keep it under the nine percent, which is the statutory limit. You can't go above nine percent.
All right. That, that happens to be the day our new treasurer starts also. I'm not so sure I wanna do that, but I'm one of five. So...
It's likely that this would have to be done before she came on. We'd probably have to do this in December.
But we also just, all of us voted unanimously to pay her to come in days between now and then. So I, I'm not concerned about...
If we go with the November timeline, does it just kinda kick all these dates back, basically, several months?
Approximately six months, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you did November, you'd be starting the process in July.
And not given us time if it doesn't pass to go for it again.
Yeah, correct.
In the meantime, then you're gonna be voting to put more votes in.
Wouldn't the fifteen be, would you lose every, so when the goal has to come up?
It needs to be voted next year.
You know it has to be in fifteen.
Yeah. No, we wouldn't lose anything. Yeah.
I mean, I think if we're gonna try to do anything, we, we need to try to do it in May.
So you, you wouldn't wanna do this in November?
No, I'd wanna do this in May, so that we have time, that if for some reason it didn't pass, we could get a game plan for November.
Jim, or...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, yeah, I mean, I, you know, it does feel like you kinda snuck up on us, but I think that's, you know, that's the reality, and it's state law. If we wanna consider this, we have to move quickly. law if we want to consider this way or from it quickly.
And we've got time to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, we just need to, you know, we have to schedule another meeting. We schedule another meeting.
Okay.
You know, just to discuss that. I mean, it's not like it's going to be a two-hour meeting or whatever, you know, we agreed to that. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't tell you where interest rates are going to be a year from now, but the whole idea behind rushing it, if you will, and that's really the right term to use, is to take advantage of the lower interest rates. You know, once you see the, the Federal Reserve starting to rel- starting to loosen constraints on inflationary impacts on, on interest rates, you're going to start to see interest rates rise. And for the near future, it doesn't look like that's going to happen. And that, that's the whole idea behind trying to do this as quickly as possible because once interest rates go up, then the cost to your taxpayer goes up as well.
Any other comments from our presenters?
No, I hear the question. It's a lot, it's a lot to digest for a period of time.
Well, thank you for coming out again this evening.
A couple of comments that I, I will work and try to find a consultant to try to give us some polling data. And I, I guess you'll talk to Chris and get back with me.
Sure.
In terms of that piece. Do we want to consider having a December 8th meeting with just the only agenda item is the master facility plan to kind of get some better direction from the board?
I think I'd, I'd be fine with that.
We have three weeks from there.
That's a Monday night.
It's a Monday night, December 8th. We canceled our December 1st, and that's a date that won't work. And that, that's three weeks from today, and we might be able to get some data back by then. It would be close, but I don't know if we'd be able to do that or not. It's seven o'clock on December 8th. We want to schedule that. Dan, do you want to talk to Chris first about that?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll wait to hear back from you on that. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
We want to also thank the people that came for the committee meeting, and we really felt like their input and, and process generated a lot of value for the community.
And you bring up another point. I think we all got some questions from a community member and an email from Rich McVeigh. Would you consider forwarding it to them because he's been pestering me for answers?
Sure.
So I'm sure that Rob could come up with some answers for those questions.
Okay.
I think the last thing, Tony said it over and over again. You guys have done a great job getting yourselves into this position. We've worked with a lot of districts and, and what you've done to get to this point is, how many districts have done that across the state, so.
Well, I think you've...
To be honest, they were painful cuts, but if we could pull something off like this, it would almost ease some of that.
And I, and I also think you've done a good job. You know what it took to get your group in here, and I think you've done a good job of, of working with the five of us and all the members of the various committees and, and that's much appreciated, and I've always appreciated having a fresh set of eyes on things. So thank you. And our next item is curriculum and instruction item?
Yes. We have our graduation requirements. We'd like to update the board regarding graduation requirements. So this, this year, freshmen entered school without really knowing their exact graduation requirements because the board of, the state board of education was trying to catch up with the state legislature, and they finally passed their final rules back in late September, October. So as a result of that, I thought it'd be helpful for Mike to kind of go through all the graduation requirements, but it's also going to require a change in our policy. Our, our policy is IKE, I think, is a policy that we have. Our IKF is a policy that we have. So this will also be a little bit about that policy that we'll bring back to the next meeting for approval. Go ahead.
Basically, what we're going to talk about tonight is the two criteria that's necessary for students to graduate, and we're going to talk about the new assessments as the OGT's phasing out and also credits or coursework. And so students must meet graduation requirements in both coursework and state of Ohio mandated assessments in order to receive a high school diploma. That's no different than now. They have to pass the OGT and have to meet our local requirements in order to do that. And once again, I'm going to emphasize both criteria have to be met, not and/or. The assessments are going to change, and they're going to change dramatically. This group of sophomores is the last group that will be taking the Ohio graduation test for a high school graduation requirement. So as the OGT phases out, new assessments are phasing in. Any student that started ninth grade after July 1st of this year will not be required to take the OGT. So that's our current ninth graders sitting in our classrooms today. They will not be required to take the OGT, but they will have a different assessment criteria that they must accomplish, and it's much different. We've all heard about PARC, and PARC is basically the language arts and math side, and it's, it's the 40-plus state consortium. The state-developed tests are AIR, and that stands for the American Institutes for Research, are our science and our social studies side. So when I'm talking about PARC, I'm talking about language arts and math. When I'm talking about AIR, I'm talking about social studies and science. And I'm going to emphasize that here in this standard. So we're talking about two different concepts here. We're talking, and, and you're going to see with how the assessments are developed that the state's taking a different direction with this than, um, you know, the federal government has. You're going to see terms PVA and EOI, and I've read a lot about this in the last couple of months, and there are letters that I see in my sleeve. PVA is performance-based assessments. And whoops. And EOI is end-of-the-year assessments. And performance-based assessments require students to construct responses that trained professionals then score. Our students will start taking performance-based assessments in mid to late February of this year. End-of-the-course assessments, where students respond to items that are then computer-scored, our students will be taking those in early to mid-May of this year.
Excuse me, those end of year and of course? Because some semesters are, some courses are one semester and they might be taken in January.
Well, none of the courses that we have are semester courses. And I think that that's only on, on districts that have block schedules because all the courses that are PARC or AIR are, are year-long courses, but if they're in a block schedule, and, and there is some provisions in, in the law for that, but it's not applicable to us. All performance-based assessments and end-of-the-year assessments will be completed online for students for the 14, 15 school year. We do have an option. We had an option several months ago to select whether or not our students would take these on a computer format as opposed to paper pencil. We selected as a district to do everything online this year. It's something that our students are going to have to do anyway, and we have done a lot of work between the beginning of the year and hopefully up through May to have our students prepared to do the assessments and have the technology skills to do those online. I want to give you a little perspective of what a student's going to have to take. There are seven courses that have been designated as performance-based and end-of-the-year courses. So for language arts, an incoming freshman is going to have to take performance-based assessments and end-of-the-year exams in both English 1 and English 2. So this year, any ninth grader that is in English 1, and if we have an accelerated ninth grader in English 2, they will have to take these assessments this year. In math, any student that is in ninth grade or below in Algebra 1 and geometry will have to take both the performance-based assessment and end-of-the-year exam. You think about that for a second. That is a significant number of eighth graders taking Algebra 1 at our middle schools, as well as ninth graders taking honors geometry as a ninth grader because they took Algebra 1 last year. What's that look like? For English 1, so you're, you're a ninth grader sitting there, these performance-based assessments, there are three units or three sessions. So they're going to have one day of assessment, one day of testing in 75 minutes, a second day that's 90 minutes, and a third day that's 60 minutes. And that's for the performance-based piece, and that's in February. That then goes off to get the score. They then have to take two more units of this in May, and they're 60 minutes each. So just for English 1, there are five units of assessment that students must take this year, and they will get one composite score from all of that testing. English 2, basically the same concept. They have three units at 75, 90, and 60 minutes, and two units at, at 60 minutes for the end of the year. Math, a little different. Two units, one at 75 and one at 90 minutes, and then the end-of-the-year assessment at 80 and 75 minutes. So for a ninth grader, right now, what we've looked at is three, four, five, six, seven, nine sessions of testing in English and math. And in geometry, if we do, and this is for your honors geometry kids for this year, those ninth graders that are taking, you know, honors geometry, they'll have two units for performance-based and two units for the end-of-the-year exam. Now, once again, that's, that's the PARC assessments. The state of Ohio has come out, and physical science has a performance-based and end-of-the-year exam. Social studies has a U.S. history and government performance-based and end-of-the-year exam. And the state's done this a little different. Any student enrolled in those courses this year, irregardless of its graduation requirement, must take these assessments. So for physical science, that isn't as big of a factor for us because our freshmen take this course. And they will take one unit at 90 minutes for the performance-based and a second end-of-the-year unit at 90 minutes in May. American history, and this is primarily soft, current sophomores, and current sophomores will have to take the American history assessment and the end-of-the-year exam on top of taking the OGT for social studies because the OGT is what their graduation requirement is. The state is requiring them to take this, and they want to collect data for futuristic testing. The same, the same goes for government. Most of our seniors take government, and they will be taking these, this performance-based assessment and end-of-the-year exam. The reason I go through that, if you look at an incoming ninth grader, that is what they're going to have to take over their high school career as far as assessment goes. Much different than taking the OGT in the curriculum areas as a sophomore. So when you look at that, the three units and the three units and the two units, we have over 20 units or 20 sessions of testing that encumber seven different curriculum areas that students will be required to be assessed on, and that is with our incoming freshmen. Like I said, any student that was a freshman after July 1st. There are seven total courses, and what happens is students receive one composite score on each one of those assessments. So there are seven assessments, a one being the lowest score and a five being the highest score. So for seven assessments, if, if you score a five on each assessment, you can get a 35. If you score a one on each assessment, you can get a seven. You must have a total of 18 points in order to meet the Ohio graduation requirement. So averaging roughly 2.6, 2.7 on each assessment is what you would need. But the state's gone a little further because they want balance. So not only do they have to have 18 points, four of those points must be in math. So you can't go in and get a one and a one on math and have 18 overall points and still, you know, still meet the criteria. You must have four, at least four points in, in language arts or English. And you must have six total points in science and social studies. So 18 overall points, but you must have them in the right areas, once again. And, and the state has done that because they don't want a student to have all the points in the math and science areas and very few the little points in, in, you know, social studies and, and language arts. Now, what happens if the student doesn't get 18 points? What happens if, for whatever reason, they, they are not performing well on these assessments, they cannot get the 18 points? Well, there are two additional pathways that students have to graduate from high school. One, and then don't rely on these end-of-the-course assessments at 18 points. Maybe I should have taken the tutorial ones.
It's got a touchy trigger on it, doesn't it?
It's been worn out tonight. You must earn a remediation-free score on the nationally recognized tests such as the ACT or SAT. So a student that's not passing and not doing well on the PARC and AIR assessments, but gets a remediation-free score on the ACT and SAT would meet that criteria. If you think through that logically, that's not likely to occur.
Sorry.
If you're not doing well on the PARC assessment, the likelihood of them being remediation-free on the ACT and SAT probably isn't real great.
Do you know what that score would be? What's a remediation-free score on the ACT?
Yeah, I do. And it depends on what, what subject area, and I'm glad you asked that question because I knew someone was going to.
Yeah.
In English, for the ACT in English, last year was a 28, in reading, it was a 21, and math, 22.
28 in English?
An 18.
18.
18, a 21, and 22.
I'm sorry. 28.
You said 28.
I meant 18.
I know honors students look at that.
18 in English, a 21 in reading, or a 22 in math on the ACT. The SAT equivalent to that is a 430 in writing, a 450 in, in reading, or a 520 in math. So if you're not remedial-free on the ACT or SAT, and you haven't, and can't accumulate the 18 points, there is a third option, a third pathway is what the state's going. And you must earn what they call a state board of education-approved industry-recognized credential or a state-issued license for practicing a career and achieve a score to demonstrate workforce readiness and employability on a job skills assessment.
Do we have any idea what that really means as a practical matter?
I'll use an example. We, we have the new hospitalology lab over at North West High School in the career tech. At the end of that, students have to take an assessment and to receive a license. That would be an industry-credentialed license that they would be able to get at the end of their high school career that would supersede the testing piece. I can tell you right now, we're working with both our tech because a lot of these courses, they don't have industry-credentialed licenses right now. The state is mostly coming out with some language on what courses do have those and what those look like, and we don't, we don't have a lot of direction on some of our courses yet on what that looks like.
So in other words, that's nice if you happen to be in hospitalology, but if you're in, say, you know, automatic, yeah.
Or some machine, what, what does that look like? Or some of our other programs, what does that look like? That's still ambiguous as to what that's going to look like. And we've been asking this question since September. I, well, what does that mean? You know, what pathways can you put our kids on to get that if they aren't doing well on the PARC? And, you know, there's, still not answers out there with some of that. We're getting closer to that. That is the assessment piece. One of three ways. 18 points or more, a pathway that's remedial-free on ACT, SAT, and/or... 18 points or more, a pathway that's remedial-free on ACT, SAT, and/or the career license pathway. We also are looking at coursework, and this really hasn't changed a whole lot. You must earn the four units of English, four math, four social studies. In Northwest, we've required that fourth unit of social studies. The state has not required that, and three units of science. Health is a mandated, a half-credit. Phys ed is a half-a-credit, and that is actually two semesters of phys ed. Phys ed is the only course that's affordable credit for a semester.
The last two are language and...
Right. In Northwest, we require kids to take a unit of fine arts or foreign language to graduate from high school. One of the recommendations that we are proposing is a change with this language. Students that select a career pathway will be required to select from a combination of elective but are not required to complete one unit of fine arts or foreign language. The reason for our recommendation is that we have many students that struggle with that credit now because we can't fit them into those courses until junior and senior year. Many of those career tech programs are blocked for three bells at a time, and it's very difficult to fit them in there. For those students only, because we can count those blocked courses as elective credits, but it's not specifically a fine arts or foreign language credit. We are asking for flexibility with that credit. And I know that that's something that's been communicated through Butler Tech, it's been communicated through our councils, that in several situations every year, we have challenges getting the right credits with those kids. All the students will still be required to have 21 credits here regardless of what pathway they take, but what the difference would be as a kid on a career tech pathway would not necessarily be required to have a foreign language or fine arts credit. The second piece to this is that currently, we offer a computers' application course at the high school, and that is offered at a half-credit, and we require every student to take that. Our proposal is to no longer require that credit, but to move that course, which in essence is a keyboarding course, to the middle school level for students to take that prior to entering high school. If you look at this, if you look at the state standards for computer applications, that course should be, it's more appropriate to introduce that course at a grade level at 6, 7, or 8 grade.
Okay, quick question. I guess it's, what would happen to the students who would be kind of caught in that jump where they didn't take it, say, you know, they're ninth grade for whatever reason, they didn't take it, or 10th grade for whatever reason, they haven't taken it yet? Okay, granted, it's not a requirement, but you're moving it back to middle school. Is there going to be a way for those students that kind of are on the other side of that jump to take it as an elective so that they can get that keyboarding experience if they even need it?
Well, they may not have the opportunity to take it. No, that's, if they haven't taken it for next year, let's say it's a junior, I can tell you right now, I think we have every freshman in both of Washington taking that this year.
Okay, so, okay, so that's, okay.
If they transferred in, maybe they didn't have it, but if they've been here...
Sure. Regarding the foreign language, fine arts issue with block scheduling for the Career Tech students, how is, how are other school districts in the Butler Tech Consortium handling that issue?
I don't know a school district that requires it for those students. As a matter of fact, the state has really come out with language similar to the one that we're proposing tonight, the way that, and it's for that reason, Mike. It's due to the fact that with the block scheduling that, there's only so many slots available for kids to take courses through there, and it just provides some flexibility. And, you know, someone explained it to me, just like if they're in class welding something or if they're in an art class creating pottery or that, it's very similar in a lot of different ways.
Sure.
And so, you know, that's why we're asking, because it's extremely difficult to schedule those kids, especially with the amount of career tech programming that we have in this district. It makes a lot of sense to create that flexibility.
Sure. Mike, on that computer applications, we may have to consider, so next year, the students becoming freshmen, they won't be required to take computer applications, but we may have to consider having maybe a section or two available for them for that one transition year.
And we have to have some staffing possibilities to do that because the way the middle school schedule works, we're going to have about two bells available for someone to be able to swing back and forth if we need to do that for a year.
So it won't be a graduation requirement for those students because we moved it down, but they'll have that possible option if they, as an elective, they want to take it that way.
And it's going to be on supply and demand if that is true. In fact, we have two students that really want to take it. That's going to be a difficult piece.
Right.
But we have 25, a reasonable number, a representative number we can do that. So concluding, students need to meet the testing and curriculum requirements. Testing criteria, 18 points on the seven PARC and AIR assessments, a remediation-free score, or, it's not and, it's or, earning a state of education, a student industry-recognized credential. And from the curriculum side, it's the 21 credits in the correct areas. You know, it can't be 21 phys ed credits, obviously. It has to be in the right areas. But my point being is that irregardless, that is above the state minimum. The state minimum is 20. That additional credit really comes in our social studies curriculum where we offer, we require the one credits in social studies where the state only does three. Does anyone have any questions? Other than I, you would probably have some remediation.
I would just like to comment, you're a very good presenter and have done an excellent job of getting through that and explaining it.
Well, it's, it's subject to change, but as of today, no...
Oh, it's very, very fluid, I'm sure, but you've just, you've done a really good job of explaining that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
You have a copy of...
It is really good. Okay, yeah, oh yeah, we do have a copy of it here, but that was a really good presentation. I guess I have many news articles and votes since we already have read, and it's just been kind of, just other sources, it just seems very, you know, very nebulous, yes, very good word, nebulous. But this was, you made it very concrete. It's still obviously a lot of work, and it seems like quite a few hoops. It kind of reminds me of flying out a Yahtzee scorecard where you're trying to fit everything in, but it's still, you did a great job of explaining it tonight.
Well, I think it's really important that, once we do this, when we present this to parents, it needs to be clear, it needs to be, you know, less ambiguous than it's been presented. So if I'm a ninth grade parent, if I'm a parent of a ninth grader, I want them to be able to sit down and look at this and read it and be able to understand it as opposed to some of the things that have come across my desk where I'm like, what does this mean? And all, everybody up there, we've gotten together, what does this really mean? And let's put it in terms that we can understand it, because it isn't always coming through us that way. So, you know, we're hopeful that we organize this in a way that's understandable, that we can articulate it out there and we can communicate it to our parents.
Board, you have a copy of policy IKF, and that is a, changes in that policy are according to what Mike presented on his recommendation. So we'll bring that back to the next board meeting for board approval. But if the board's okay with it, then we'll approve that policy per the recommendation that we can be...
And IKF is permitted with all the changes that were...
So that'll be on for the 15th meeting?
Yes, yeah, the 15th.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next item is Northwest Notables.
Those are just in-your-packet review.
Okay. And they're available on the district electronic school board for anyone that wants to see them. And our next item is community comments and questions. If there's anyone in the audience that has a question about something that was discussed this evening. Seeing no one. Board members, comments, Mr. Vetzel?
I don't have any.
Michael?
I was able to attend the Ohio School Board Association Capitol Conference. Dan was there for some of it, as well as Jim and Pam. It was great to see at the, you know, Achievement Fair, a couple of our, a couple of our organizations, the Weigle Wildcats presented on their student portfolios as far as the Student Achievement Fair and the show cards, put on a very good presentation as well. And I was able to attend seminars on 21st century learning, career technical education, and transportation issues. So it was a very good and very productive couple of days up there in Columbus, and glad to have had the opportunity. Also, appreciate all of the Veterans Day recognitions that were part of the district activities. Unfortunately, Veterans Day fell on the 11th, which is during the USBA conference, so I was unable to attend any of those.
Thank you. Michael, do you have any comments? Pam?
Just pretty much one, I was going to say what Michael said. It was, it was great, after all these years, to finally see the show cards performing up in Columbus. And I know, it sounds like they've already been extended another, or going to be extended another invitation to perform at one of the...
Yeah, the Southwest Regional.
The Southwest, yes. They did a nice job. And as always, the Achievement Fair was my favorite, and the kids at Weigle were amazing. They, they did such a good job explaining everything, and they looked real nice, and I look forward to seeing them when they come and present. I believe it's in December. They'll be here in December at a board meeting.
Thank you, Pam. I would like to take a minute to extend the sympathy of this board to Chris Heater. His father, who he took care of for a very long time, passed away early this morning. And I got to meet Mr. Heater a few times, and he was quite an individual. He had a very long life, and he was one of the great veterans of World War II. And I just know Chris has spent a tremendous amount of time taking care of his father, and so my deepest sympathy to the family, and that's, Chris does not miss a whole lot of meetings. In his first term of service on the board several years ago, he did not miss a single meeting, and I don't think he's missed any in the past year. So it would really take something big like that to have him not be here, and that's kind of why I wanted to divert some of the discussion to the next time we get together. But I'm sure we all extend our sympathy to his family and his brother Tim and his sister, and may have spent a long time taking care of his father. So with no other comments, we'll move on to the next item, and that would be executive session.
So this is to move the exec session to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are subject or pending of, or subject of pending or imminent court action. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
So moved.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, I will comment that when we come back to close the meeting, there'll be no decisions made. We're just going in to have a discussion. So we'll move on to the, to that, and we'll just leave the screens up, and we will close the meeting when we come back.
Don't we need to vote?
Yeah, I actually, no, we need to vote for the...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we'll go ahead and call for a vote. I need to go back.
You need to go back.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have it up where it says to vote.
He flipped past it, he has to go back.
See if it, I'm back.